Time frame we had for this set of policies. But our goal, questions or any concerns you guys have on this group of policies. As you can see, quite a few of them do not have recommended changes. The one that do, if you did have time to look at them, are language changes for the most part, next Thursday at the voting meeting. So if you have any concerns between last month and tonight that you'd like to bring up, please do so.
I've gone through most of them and it's they are just. And I read the, um, the policy, uh, the network update where there was some just change in nomenclature at the state level and that's rippled down through these policies and that's what most of the changes are. In fact, a lot of them are even out of sync from the five-year review period because of that naming change. So I didn't see anything that was noteworthy or anything concerning.
You know?
Any further question? All right, so just remember these policies will be on the regular board meeting agenda for November 21st. Does anyone have anything for budget, finance and facilities?
Yes, we do. So last month, we discussed capital projects. There was a discussion about the surplus and where to transfer it to. So we wanted to just briefly review with the board once again, the current capital projects list or CapEx list that we're working off of. So that should be in everybody's folder. It's titled Capital Projects. So just so everyone knows who maybe hasn't been around or hasn't seen this in a while. This is our capital projects list. We generally move in three to five-year increments of what are the capital needs of the school district. So that would be any additional building projects, any maintenance-related projects, technology, extracurricular, things that have a cost that usually lie outside the budgetary guidelines of our buildings. So if the high school needs a new roof, that roofing project would not go on the high school budget because it would completely exceed what their allocation is. It would go onto the capital expenditures list. So this is the list we're working off of. That was the 23-26 list. So you can see the projects that are listed by date. You can see the balance that remains for them. You could see some of the miscellaneous renovations that have been done, some of the projects that have been put into place. You also can see the estimated balance available in the capital expenditures, section after each project that's listed. If you guys would flip to page four, please. You'll see there the last of the projects that were approved on the 23-26 list that still have their balance essentially remaining for the most part. Only one has been started. We are currently creating our 27 to 29 or 30 list as we speak. It starts with Mr. Eversdyke in support services and Mr. Hesling in the business office. We then just introduce it to our principals so that they can fill us in on what are the physical capital needs of each of our buildings and campuses. And then we reach out to our technology, our security, our extracurricular areas to see what are the costs that we see coming down the road for everyone. So the idea of the capital expenditure fund is to keep that balance in a position where if something happens in one of our buildings, if something major breaks down, that we have monies available to pay for those projects as well as planning three to five years in the future with general maintenance that needs to be done across all of our campuses, cracks in sidewalks, roofs, as I said before, mill work that has to be done, anything, safety and security, replacement of vehicles is a cost that comes up in CapEx. But it's something that we spend a lot of time on planning and preparing as well as any new projects that may come now. 12 to 18 months ago, we introduced some new projects that we felt would be beneficial for the school district, projects that we felt were left in some stage of either disrepair or spaces around our campuses that are overcrowded that could benefit from more space essentially. And those projects would essentially get close to or exhaust what our balance would be in CapEx. So our plan was to try to pursue grant opportunities to bolster the capital expenditures project. That's not an endeavor that the district has ever aggressively pursued before. I give Dr. Pope a tremendous amount of credit as our main person that works on grant work. But we added into here just the grants that we've able to been, that we've been able to procure over the last year on page four, right underneath that 26 projects list. So the environmental grant that we got that you read about previously over the summer, the one that was very recent that we were excited for, that was around the news quite vocally, was that public school facility improvement grant, which we put in for roofing projects. So essentially, those are roofing projects that are already on our CapEx list. But what we were able to do was to get $300,000 from the state to offset those costs. Okay, which again, to us, when you look at just from a balance sheet perspective, that's $300,000 in the plus column. We also have school safety and mental health grant. That would be the safety portion that we could allocate to some of the safety needs that Chief Molia and his officers identify. We discussed the E-Rate program that Dylan Saterno pursued that will expand our bandwidth and make sure that our computers and internet are completely capable of handling the mandated online testing that's coming from the state as well as just the basic daily educational needs of our teachers and students. That was very useful. The Delaware Valley Educational Foundation, this is the endeavor that Dr. Pope has been working on that we discussed in the Dingmans Middle School Library a year and a half ago, that were around through solicitations from the generosity of local businesses, a conservative estimate of $50,000 a year with plans to have being around $70,000 to $90,000 a year with more interest continually generated. So that would be advertisements on our digital board in the stadium as well as the two digital boards in the gymnasium. So that's money that goes directly to those projects. But once those projects are paid off, that is still now recurring revenue coming directly into capital or wherever else we would allocate it, but essentially the capital would be the plan. And then last but not least, you see the PA Rural Water and Stream Grant. That has to do with the news of the sewer system for Milford, the Milford-Mattamore's area. That was a grant for $200,000. So as you can see, the district's been very aggressive in pursuing monies to bolster the capital projects account in order to be able to first and foremost, continue to maintain our seven campuses over 200 square miles as well as indulge in those projects that will be for the betterment of the school district, areas that are either in disrepair or that have become space concerns for the current needs of our staff and students. And again, we could revisit those projects at a future date as well. But I just wanted to make sure we had an understanding kind of of what the district has been working on over the last year from our perspective and how important we view the CapEx. Just list as a general, it's super early in the process. But even on the 27 to 30 list, you know, generally speaking, each year is over a million dollars already in terms of what the expenditures are. It's going to be more. Just Marvin's up, again, roofs are super expensive, mill work is super expensive. There's just things that break down. And then there's things that break down unexpectedly and that's where you want to make sure you have a balance available. The goal always being that you, our philosophy is that we don't want to take out debt. We're still paying off building, construction projects that were absolutely needed in the district. But philosophically, our hope is to get our district out of debt as scheduled by '32, '33. And Bill, do you want to speak to what that, that looks like? You guys see it every year in the budget, but I just thought we could revisit it quickly here.
Yeah, the, um, the debt that we have on our books now and it basically goes three, we're currently at 3.3 million. And then when we get to 30, 31, it goes to 3.1 million for three years in a row. And then in 32, 33, it drops like 1.4 million. And then you would be debt-free if you did not have to borrow anything in the 33, 34 year, which is why we like the transfer of the capital fund to be able to push off having to borrow money for these capital projects, which is why that, that's why. When we approved the project back in October of '23, uh, on that project list was the, it was listed as TBD because we didn't know what the surplus was going to be. But when that list was approved by the board in October of '23, each of those three years had the surplus TBD go, to be determined to go to the capital fund to pay for not only the projects around here, the special projects that Brian had presented six, eight months ago, if they're going to be entertained, plus the 1.5 million moving forward. And again, you don't know what your surplus is going to be. I hope you have a surplus, but that was the goal of the whole capital project type scenario.
And just as a reminder from last month, that from a budgetary perspective, you know, a surplus of almost 1.6 million dollars is substantial and that's a good thing. But when you look at the totality of our budget, our revenues from budgeting a year out came within a half a percent of being right on the money. And then expenditures, we expended 98.88% of what was budgeted. And again, I, I do honestly credit the administration and our teachers and definitely Marvin Eversdyke. They don't put numbers into the budget to pad the budget or to have a cushion in the budget. That's not how they give the numbers. What they do is throughout the school year, make very conscious, fiscally responsible decisions when it comes to what they're purchasing and what the needs are for the district. Looking for better deals, looking where they can consolidate projects to save money that eight months before in the budget, you couldn't have foreseen, and now you can. Or you budget for something to get fixed and we can fix it easier than maybe an outside company could that would charge us more. So all those things come into play throughout the school year. And I really do credit our staff for being able to come in so close to the budgetary number. But I'll echo what Bill said. I don't think something, just because people are fiscally responsible philosophically, it doesn't mean that's always going to be the case in practical because unexpected things happen. And we, we've seen and talked about a few of those unexpected things in the last few years that we've been fortunate enough because of our responsibility to be able to pay for without having to borrow more money. And by the time we get to, you know, 20, it seems like a long time away, but 31, 32, 33, 34, we may be in need of a major bond issue for a building or for a major project of something that has broken down. Some buildings are getting to that state as it is. And we just want to be in a, we want to make sure the district eight to 10 years from now is in a good position budgetarily and monetarily by doing that. And we feel that the best way to do that is to continue annually to bolster the balance in CapEx, to continue to maintain what we currently have for as long as possible as well as make sure our things are lasting as long as possible and getting to that point where we can be debt-free in case there is something that needs a major bond issue. I have one. That we, and the point of us presenting this was just to clarify from last month with more information. We kind of collected your thoughts from the discussion last month to be able to share where the gaps were in our communication to you guys. So we wanted to fill those gaps tonight for you and then allow you to ask questions on that information to us. That's, you know, what we do at the work session, so please feel free.
So on the first page where it talks about interest on current CDs, 249,050. That's one year's worth of interest on CDs?
That, that would be, yes, that would be with the current CDs that we have invested.
And if we're doing a, call this a four-year projection, five-year projection, wouldn't we carry some of that forward every year? So if we get 250 a year for the next four years?
That's a good question.
Two? I try to ask good questions.
That is a good question. But if you look below on page four out of five, four or five?
Four.
Below the red where we identify the, the potential transfers?
Right.
If you were to entertain those projects, then there would be, there would not be necessarily that cash flow. So I did not want to speculate that you're not going to do them, but.
But as of right now, we're not doing, we haven't approved any of them.
Correct, but I don't know, you know, I mean, I certainly could. If you were to say that, take them off the map, then I could throw some more interest in that. I guess.
Or take one or two off the map. You don't have to take.
And spread them out over time.
Then you could allocate your interest.
Absolutely.
On what you've approved.
Yeah, to answer your question, I, I just did one year.
Correct.
My question in statement, I couldn't, Dr. Pope, I think this is fantastic, all these grant programs that we're getting. I wanted to go to page one. I'm focusing in on wastewater. So the 559,000 that's here, that's, is that factoring in the $200,000 grant from the PA rule? Or how's that?
Yeah, the math on the, would be the gross expense. And then on the fourth page would say that's where you'd bring the money back in.
How, how is, I mean, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Eversdyke better or Mr. Lordy maybe. What's the status of our, of our system there? How, it seems old, how are we looking?
So we actually got good news actually yesterday.
Yesterday.
Our component 3M that the district submitted through municipal authority was approved. So the school is going to be allowed to connect to the main system. And that's what that 200,000 grant that was written, we wrote it, submitted through the Westfall Authority and it was approved by the PA Rural folks down there. So we will be moving forward. We're actually meeting with the authorities engineer and the board and the school district and the district's engineer on Tuesday to finalize a formal plan of moving forward. But we are moving forward to connect to.
That's great.
Yep.
That's fantastic. So what happens, and maybe this is too much in the future, what happens to what we have now? Is there?
So what's called.
P things we have to do?
What we're going to have to do is part of that 500,000 is we have to decommission what we exist, exist, existing system and basically turn everything that we currently, that is facing the river and we discharge into the river.
Yep.
Will be turned and head towards Route 6 and connect to the main line that the authority will put in there.
That's my favorite news so far tonight.
When do you think that will happen?
Uh, now that we got that approval, the authorities engineering firm had already submitted the, to the PennDOT for the highway occupancy, the HOP permits. So we're hoping to have shovels in ground. If we have a nice mild winter, early. We, we hope to be fully connected by this time next year or earlier.
And does that have an effect on the general fund, on things we know that we have to?
We will. So we did an analysis, man, probably three or four years ago, that even the fees that we pay to the authority will still be less than what it costs us to run our existing plant. So there will be a saving, I don't, we haven't done those savings in a few years, but it will have some effect on the budget.
And that positive effect, you would say?
Yes.
So when we do the 25, 26 budget, we might have some savings there?
Possibly. But remember, we'll just be connected, depends on how soon into the year that will be, but could be, yes.
I would just like to state that both, when this news came yesterday, both Chris and Marvin said to me that they're worried that this number is two and a half years old.
Yeah.
So.
Construction.
Again, it's too early to say, but just a heads up that hopefully what number we had used there is enough. This has not been updated since, that project has been on there since.
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
23. We hope to have updated numbers on Tuesday or Wednesday.
So if we were to move money now to any of the reserves, including the capital reserves, would that affect the audit that we're toward the end of?
No, I, I, the audit basically, August, October 31st, I mean, has to be submitted to the Department of Education. So those books are closed and when, however, by a motion of the board, it would be, and what you're going to see, by a motion, the board could just move anytime the money from unassigned to transfer to capital, but it's going to, it would be on the, affecting to June 30th of 25. But no, I can't go back on the 24th, but it doesn't really make any difference. It would just be on the New Year's books.
You've already submitted to the Department of Education, that document.
Could I have a copy, please?
Allow him, I hope it's, yeah, I could probably email.
PDF, PDF, I'll, I'll spend the money in the book.
It's a bear, but you can certainly, you can have it. But yeah, you can do that. On your, matter of fact, on the board packet, last month, there's always a motion that's part of, if there's a transfer, that it, by one of the GAZB rules that the CPAs come up with, that you've got to declare during the year that you may move funds during the June 30th, the new year. And that motion was part of the other motion that got tracked down. So the piece that we needed to do was on there for next week. And what that does is, my understanding, it allows you to not make a decision on things until the October after the books are closed. So that motion's already on there, but if the board wanted to entertain transferring money to the capital fund, we can just amend, amend the motion that's already on the books for next week's meeting, if, if the board wants to entertain that.
Question with transferring money. So if we, if we transferred money next week to the capital fund, okay? And then say during budgetary talks, we see there's potential raises coming, are we able to transfer back out to the general fund or no?
My understanding is no.
Okay.
Once it's the general fund.
Once it leaves the general, it's gone.
Along with the interest.
Along with the interest.
And that's, I mean, that's a totally valid concern, especially knowing what's coming down the road. Our, I guess, thought process on order of operations is similarly, if there was something that happened that we didn't have money in the capital to pay for, that would have to come out of the general fund as well. You know what I mean? So it's kind of like, where do you want to get money from if you need it? Because while the CapEx list is approved well in advance, as, as you guys know, we had, we do add to it when things come up unexpectedly, a few of which, you know, you all have been a part of.
Forgive me for my ignorance, you know, if, if something unexpectedly happened scenario, something happened that we need money and we don't want to pull it from the general. Again, forgive me for my ignorance. Are we able to potentially say, oh, we have to call an emergency board meeting, move money into capital so we can keep that money in the general accruing the interest it's accruing rather than move it over, lose that accruement? If something was to happen in there, I'm just being hypothetical, you know what I mean?
Well, you could always call a special meeting.
If, if something was to happen in that scenario, you know, rather than putting it in just in case and losing the interest that we're accruing, if, if a tornado hits a building, we don't only get tornadoes yet, thank God, but it would need to do something. The next day, we call an emergency meeting and we move that money to capital and we're not losing all this time of interest that we could be accruing, in my opinion.
Something catastrophic is probably covered under our insurance.
But of course.
Oh, yeah.
Well, kind of reminded me when, when the state then passed their budget and we get 35% of our funds from the state.
Yeah.
I was worried about that and thank God our bank was made an arrangement that, that, because we kind of do the CDs on cash flow as payrolls can do. And they said they would, because of the circumstances, let about, let us out of that arrangement.
Yeah.
We went and take a penalty, but that's what a good banking relationship.
Absolutely.
I guess my concern is just if, if we move money and it's just going to sit there for the next year and not accrue with the interest that it's accruing in general if we do or don't do capital projects. It doesn't seem to me the best option, but I'm only one.
So I'll get back to my soapbox and state that I don't like unassigned balances at all. And in the past X amount of years, we've always exhausted virtually all of the unassigned balances. And I would still like to see us exhausted, but I'd like to see us do it in a more pro-rata way, putting some of it into PIS or some of it into OPEB. I don't think we need any reserves and some of it into capital reserves. Once we approve what I consider to be these, these great capital ideas that the administration has come up with over a period of years. But right now, what we have on this spreadsheet are, are the actual cap projects that we've approved as well as these unapproved amounts. And I'd like to get an analysis with the unapproved amounts taken out. Because it looks like on the last page that we're in some type of deficit situation, which we're not because we haven't approved $6 million worth of these cap projects. Whether it's the district office, which I think is a necessity, the locker rooms, which I walk through and I think is a necessity, the Shaola basement renovation, not quite there yet. And then some of the field turf items, not quite there yet. But the AEDY expansion to me is a must because we know what's going on in that area. And we, we want to secure facility for AEDY. So I'd like to see us approve at least those top three and then see if we are in a deficit situation, adding on all the interest, it could be a million dollars over four years onto that. So love the analysis, always liked the way your ladies do this, Bill. It's, it's great, but I would take out some of the things that are not. With this board, I think this board being here for two years, not going to happen. And then look at a more realistic picture, say the top three items, in my opinion. This building needs to be renovated, locker rooms certainly need to be renovated. And then the AEDY is something that I think we should put on the list. Not sure about the last 500,000 in Shaola. But then I'd like to see us say, okay, every year we're going to have these surpluses and we're going to pro-rata them out based on an analysis like this along with the unfunded liabilities.
And I think that's, I think that's wise. And I think that if the board wanted to kind of think in that direction, we've always presented the projects to you kind of in a lump sum. Here are the needs that we're identifying in the district over the next, you know, currently to the next four years, capital needs. But we never talked about necessarily what our preferences or your preferences, as you just laid them out, would be to say, okay, here's like priority one that we'd like to get shovels in the ground on, priority two, that maybe you start a year from now, priority three, two to three years down the road, which may give you a better indication. And then the ones that would be, like you said, this board doesn't have an appetite for some things, then they could stay just on the last page as potential future projects, but with no date or allocation plan for them, just so that they're there as previously been identified. But that's something we've talked about in terms of where your head is at on those projects. And again, like Carl said, it's one person's opinion. The only thing I would say from our needs assessment that I would rotate a little bit, both from a cost perspective as well as an immediate utility perspective, I would swap Shaola and AEDY. I think that, I think I, again, they wouldn't be here if we didn't identify them as needs. As I said previously, this is something that came about with a lot of research, a lot of work with the stakeholders across our entire district to narrow it down to these projects. But also involving those same stakeholders, they feel similarly that where we're currently at with our AEDY program, we are, we are self-sufficient. If we were to expand the program or utilize it in a larger fashion, that's when the expansion would become something that we would want to explore if we were to go in that direction.
And my point on AEDY is that we did speak about the expansion.
Absolutely.
And if we do the projects, this building and the locker room and the AEDY, I would think you'll get a break on your startup costs from your contractors because you're all on the same campus, all starting at the same time, shovels in the ground, people, people on the facility. So I, I think you're going to save some money there as opposed to doing AEDY two years from now. And all these folks have to come back. They're going to do all your startup costs again for you, mobilization costs is what they call it. Maybe even legal costs, I'm not sure, but it would seem to me the AEDY.
We do, and we do, and that's very valid. We currently have our architect looking at these two projects simultaneously. Instead of in a vacuum, what would be the potential cost savings?
If there's savings for two, there's going to be savings.
I just think in the, the space in Shaola, while I don't think we'd coalesce around a use for it, the space is very usable. So I think that there can be, there's a lot of different people on the school side that have different visions for how that space could be used, especially now with a new principal there. And some potential new programs that could go into that space as well. It's a very, it's like a very nice piece of property that's kind of sitting out there in disrepair instead of being cared for and used in a way that could directly.
And it's still always cost of all of these, right?
And the cost of the piece.
If we go to page four or five, to your point, Jack, just to show that, since we're talking about it, two-thirds of the way down the page, then. two-thirds of the way down the page, then just to kind of further explain it, the 3.491, that is the projected balance without doing those projects below that you mentioned. But if you did, did those projects below, then you would be in the negative. However, right above that with the 1.598 that we did not transfer. If that was transferred, then you would be in the positive heading into, and I say again, it's most likely going to be 1.5 million at least every year moving forward. I mean, most likely. So while we're all talking about it, I just, does anybody have any questions about what I just said?
My question would be, in, in the context of looking at, if the hypothetical sales happen below, then we'd be in the positive.
Well, and you've been, you've been a positive for two-thirds of one more year of projects.
Okay.
That's kind of the way I would look at that. If, if, you know what I mean? It's around the number of that kind of thing. And I, yeah, you know, the four and a half percent, Jack, I don't know, maybe you probably, you know, because we're going to take a couple of years to spend it, there's probably a couple hundred thousand or something.
But if I were going just by the numbers and you're saying on page four, we're short 237,000. Sure, let's, let's move out of our 1.6, move 237, that becomes zero.
Assuming.
And plus.
Assuming it doesn't cost us more.
And, and that's the whole, the whole problem I'm seeing is the, the million six number for the renovation of this building is a year ago. And I'm sure it's up nine percent since, like everything else is up 10%, you know. So I really think getting started on some of these projects now saves us money in the, the long run. But if we just want to sit on this and collect the interest in the general fund, I'm okay with that, because it'll help us come budget time. The problem I see come budget time is if we have unassigned balance and we have increased costs in the general fund, it is going to be so tempting for the board to spend that on, on taxation issues. And then it puts a hole, another hole in the next year, because now you're going to make it all up again. So I'd much rather see us use the unassigned balance and, and, and put it into our, our game plan, put a game plan that includes unfunded liabilities in it.
Can you elaborate? What do you mean by taxation issues?
Well, if you have an unassigned balance of a million six and we're short next year without raising taxes, a million six, you could use the whole million six to pay off, pay off that year. The problem is when you get to the, you get to the following year, now you're a million six in the hole. And costs, as, as you know, they're kind of repetitive here. Eighty percent is salaries and benefits, you know, so if, if you decide to use, well, not you, but if the board decides to use a million six next, next year to fill that budget gap, don't we look great? No tax increase. The following year, the next board, whatever that is, has a million six problem on their hand, maybe more if we, if we approve contracts. So I'd, I'd like to see us get rid of the unassigned balance as soon as possible so that we're not tempted. Because I understand the temptation. I've been on the board a long time. No one likes to raise taxes. But yet it becomes a necessity when costs keep going up. So Bill's, Bill does, and his staff do such a great job reducing the small, what I consider very small surplus every year. If you were coming in here every year with a $5 million surplus, Bill, I'd say, we're giving you too much money. But 1%, 1 and a half percent revenues and expenses, it's amazing, quite frankly. And, and I praised you last year for that, you understand. But here we have this million six, here we have these great ideas in front of us. I think we need to move forward.
You hope the average of everything happens. You under on some, you're going to go over on some, cyber school and all that stuff. The other point that is the, the legislation, legislators, when they see unassigned fund balance, they, they really sometimes want to go after school districts. You'll see that occasionally when it comes to their budget time, when they take a look at that. So, I mean, I think we've got to be careful of matter, no matter what the fund balance, what you call it, of having too much, whether it's committed or definitely not unassigned. So it'd be my recommendation to move it to capital.
I don't have any appetite to keep it in unassigned. I think that was just a temporary, I think that was a stopgap based on some of the discussion last month, but I think we need to get, I think we need to, to use Dr. Blomster and coalesce around some of these projects and figure out what we're going to start, because we did commit to doing that last year.
I'll say, in my opinion, in the projects, I'm not all the way there yet. I'd really like to see what the new numbers are potentially going to be, and that could bring me there, you know, that could get me there. But moving money tonight, not knowing what we're looking at, maybe the DO project, Dr. Blom finds out in 30 days is actually going to be 2.7. I think that'd be ridiculous, but maybe, let's be more realistic. Let's be, let's say it's 1.9, between 1.9 and 2.1 is what maybe comes in, in the next 30 days and he comes to us in December. And then these other projects, Shaola basement, maybe that comes in, instead of 500, comes in at a million. These numbers, to me, in my opinion, aren't real for us to make, take action on. Well, not tonight, next week, for us to take action on next week. I think we need, if we're seriously going to consider these capital projects and start moving money around to seriously consider them, I don't see the, the harm in waiting an extra month into December to get real numbers for us to seriously consider this, so we know what we're looking at, instead of these right now, what I'll call hypothetical numbers.
Well, the district renovation, we, we've asked our architect twice.
All of these are hard numbers, but to Carl's point, eight to 12 months. Yeah, but they were not estimates. I mean, they were.
No, I believe you.
Yeah, but, but they're all.
But they're all numbers, so I really would love to see, I'm hoping it's not that huge of a difference, but I really would feel more comfortable and a better steward to the taxpayers, knowing why I'm moving this money with real data rather than eight-year-old data to use.
Absolutely, and on our end.
Thinking 10 months.
Yeah, 10 months, sorry. Eight, I can eight months, no, eight months to a year, I said, maybe I said that wrong.
Similarly, to speak to your point, we, we reached out to our architect to inquire as to what potential cost savings there would be if projects were done simultaneously, just thinking the same way you are. While it's more to bite off, you know, right now, if it saves you $300,000 to $500,000, it would be irresponsible almost not to do that if we're already considering doing them, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that's updated numbers.
I, I agree, 100%. Bill, I mean, again, these are bigger numbers, it might not be huge. What approximately, if we keep the money right now, the way, or what's, what's the interest gain we get in 30 days?
You mean for it leaving the general?
Yes.
The 1.5 you're talking about?
Correct.
I would say it's between 45 and 50,000. And the Fed just dropped the rate, so I got to see what happened to ours at the end.
So even if it's 35,000, I mean, small potatoes, but it buys us a couple of new printers and stuff, you know. So I, I think it'd be prudent for us to wait and not vote on this next week, get these updated numbers, and then really dive into it at the next work session, once we have those updated numbers.
Do you think Don Flynn could get that in 45 days? Excuse me? Do you think Don Flynn could get us those numbers in 45 days? Just to, not recertify, but reissue those numbers again, and maybe he'll just say, things are the same.
The only, the only concern I would have is the lack of a work session in December. But we could do it as a presentation at the December 12th, 11th. No, that, not the reorg.
You can't do it at the reorg.
Yeah, the 12th would be my thought. We could do it as a presentation on the 12th. Carl, with that.
Yeah, vote on it in January. Yeah, I mean, to, to me, just to me, especially if we waited to vote on in January, then we have, now we've made potentially 80,000 in interest. I know it's not huge numbers, but it's better than just moving it now blindly without having a little more solid data to, to look at, in my opinion.
So I'm not sold up the projects. Maybe I will be, but I'm not yet. But I'm still, I'm still in favor, in favor of moving the money to CapEx, just because regardless of any new projects that we take on, we still have to maintain the facilities that we do have. And if our, if the numbers from 27 to 30 are all over a million dollars a year, I do think that this money is going to be used for those capital projects. And in the future, it is going to, in my opinion, it would save the taxpayers. And I know, believe me, I'm concerned about contracts as well. But taking the 1.6 and offsetting what our, our budget is for next year because of contract and salary increases, like Jack said, is just going to pit a hole the following year. What I would suggest we do is look at some of those transfers, and if there are areas, and if there's line items that are continually, we're overfunding, you know, then those are areas that we could look at when we're budgeting to cut those areas and reduce those expenses so that there isn't, you know, that, that surplus in those categories for the following year, which could then offset some of those contract costs. But I do, I, I am concerned about discussing and using that money when we're talking about contracts and salary increases, because I do think that it, it puts us in a financial situation the following year.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all. I think, I, I agree 100% with what you're saying. I just think for us to move that money right this second, if there's, I don't know if there's appetite for the projects here. But I, I, there's no way for us to know if there's appetite for any of the projects, that we actually have real numbers, in my opinion, you know? And then, then we can go from there, and waiting those two months to gain a little interest and then us as a board committing that we're going to move this money in January.
I'm okay waiting.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing this, we're saving public record, we're going to do this in January, let the public hold us accountable then. Just so we can know exactly, we're making the best choice for the monies. And my other, my other opinion, a question is, and obviously being a new board member, Jack mentioned it briefly. I do have concern, and I'm not sure how my colleagues here feel about it, I'd be interested to hear, about the unfunded liabilities like PISers and all that. It seems to me like it's something that's kicking the can down the road that will eventually get called due. And what do we do at that point, rather than starting to put some money into that for when that day happens? It, it seems to me we need to consider what's going to happen in 10, 15 years if, if that gets called due. And we're going to be caught with our pants down potentially. And we should, and when we have monies like this, maybe we should be putting some monies into those accounts.
Yeah, I, I've been doing a lot of reading on the PISers and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that there's a board of trustees that get together and they set the required percentage for that year, not the district is required to pay, right? Not just our district, but the entire, all the districts across Pennsylvania pay the same percent on their total salaries, right? And it looks to me, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm missing something, but it looks to me like for the past nine years, the fund isn't fully funded, right? It's correct when we say that. But Delaware Valley is fully funding their requirement that's given.
By law.
Right, by law. And it looks like that trend over the past nine years has incrementally gone up. And I think it's sitting somewhere, right now it's 63, 64% funded. And it's projected that it keeps going up, right? But, I mean, there's a lot of money being invested in, in markets, right? In the marketplace, I think it was 65% of the contributions come from the markets and then the other percents come from, you know, the districts or then the employee. I, I think that there'd be like, there'd have to be something catastrophic that would happen for all that, that kind of tank, where the state would come in and say, you know, if they're not just going to pull the money from us, they're going to ask statewide, right? And if we have a surplus of money in, in our funds for that, they're going to say, well, Delaware Valley is pretty well positioned. Yeah, we'll take that, but we're going to bail out everybody else. So I'm, I'm just wondering, is it worth putting all that money into that fund if it's such a hypothetical? Or is it better off served in, you know, capital projects or general fund or?
Yeah, I do have $7 million in that fund, so it isn't like we have nothing.
Well, and I want to, while it technically is unfunded, because it is not funded at 100%, I don't want the public or anybody to think that we are not paying into it. We pay into it at least monthly, sometimes twice a month. So we are contributing, it's the 33.9% bill, right? So, and we are meeting our, we are living up to our obligation to, to pay into PISers. So we are paying into the pension at least every month. And if the Commonwealth has made a pledge to fully fund the pension system by a certain date and we are meeting our obligations on a monthly basis to get there, then I don't see why we should take money away from our kids and our teachers to put it in a fund when we're already, it's already, there's already a plan in place to fund the pension system. So I, I would be against putting too much money into that pension system to give the state the ability to play with our money and invest it the way they want to. And then, as Brian said, potentially bail out other districts should something catastrophic happen 10, 15 years down the road.
Jack, maybe a question, I'm not as seasoned in, in that area, and I know you're.
I'm, I'm listening, and some of the things that are saying are, are skewed.
Okay, then, then please, correct me.
Yeah, correct. Because it sounded, when I was reading, it sounded like that percentage that that board comes up with, like their projection is kind of baked into that number to get to the fully funded percent funded.
Nothing I've read has said that.
Well, they didn't come out and say it directly, but it, they, they say like, there's a strategy in place that Pennsylvania, the state, turn to fully fund the pension plans. But to me, when I read that, I understood it as, there's a strategy in place.
We've fully funded 33% of the 51% that the actuaries have come up with, that will take us the full funding. So the state is not getting us the full funding. At some point, there'll be so many retired readers, oh, well, you can read this, that the problem is, there'll be more people collecting from the pool than putting into the pool. And that's where this, it becomes disjointed. And we don't want a major catastrophe all at once. But what's happening is, it's a catastrophe over a long period of time. And it will be unfunded at some point totally. It will, it will run out, except for what we put in every year. Right now, there's $60 billion in there. There should be $90 billion.
Is that based on certain scenario?
Yeah, and even our art report gives you a certain scenario.
Right, I, I've got three different scenarios. So one, it was fully funded and.
A 1% change, changes everything.
Sure, in either direction.
So Jack, here's a question though. So if we, if we choose to transfer some portion of that 1.5, this year, next year, whenever, into PISers, is, is, is the scenario Brian brought up possible? Is it that, oh, DV is overfunded, they're fine. So let's take some of their surplus and give it to some other districts that were not as fortunate to be as well-funded. Is, is there a potential for our money to go to other districts?
I think it's highly unlikely in 25 years of doing this, that the state has ever stepped in and said, we're taking money from DV to give someone.
Well, that's, I didn't, no, that's why I was asking.
It's never happened since I've been on the board. And we've never heard the state say, well, we're taking money from, from the wealthy school district. And by, by four, we're not wealthy, and giving it to the poor districts, other than in their annual allocation that they, they do that.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mean that. I, I meant that our, if they called all the school districts across Pennsylvania to pony up, they would take ours for sure.
I think it'd be more likely that they would impose a tax. And we would then either have to pass that along to the taxpayers on the real estate level. My opinion is they will come up with imposing an income tax. I guess it was 10 years ago, they allowed us to make a choice. We all went to the polls and voted against the income tax. But if they get to the point where they're, they're unable to fund even the 33%, and they would never let it get so low that they, they get to that point, they would impose an income tax, which nobody wants.
Sure.
Because we had that opportunity 10 years to vote on that. So I don't think they'll take the money from us. And I don't, I don't know if it'd even be constitutional, we'd have to ask Nick, whether they could go to certain school districts and say, well, you've got to pay more, but these other districts cannot have more. They would impose an income tax, of course, or 1%, 1 and a half percent. And I would hope we never get there. But I don't think they're going to come to Delaware Valley and take our money from us.
But I do think that legislators, I, I do worry about having too big a fund balance. I mean, no doubt about it.
They allow us to have 8%, right?
Correct.
8%?
But I mean.
We don't, we've never had anything more than what we have now, the unassigned balance.
But just, I just always don't trust them to the point of sometimes, well, they all of a sudden say, now they might not take money from here to give to you, but if they'll say, well, if you have a fund balance of this, we're going to restrict you from doing that.
If we were to go over the 8%, I would say, yes, they could take, take it.
And unassigned.
Unassigned.
But they could.
So our $100 million budget, unassigned would have to be $8 million for, above, if they allow us to have $8 million. allow us to have $8 million. The committee balances, they allow us to commit right up to the unfunded liability amount. But we know we're near that, we owe $156 million in unfunded liabilities for PISers. And we have seven? Seven set aside?
Yeah, I think, I think we're at 119 for this upcoming audit.
119.
Correct. And we always have this discussion.
Half of it paid for.
Full disclosure.
Yeah.
The state reimburses us, in our case, about 57% of that expense we pay in. But the GASB rules that they have in place, and it's been for 30, 40 years, that's been happening, they will not let that factor into the amount of our liability because it's got to be voted on by legislators each year, is my understanding.
There's no guarantee that they're going to give us 57%.
But they, from a practical point of view, they've done it for 35, 40 years. And, but they, the GASB people just wouldn't not allow that, so, I mean, I, I could say that that 119, if you look at it another way, could be 43% of that, in my opinion. Still a big number, but.
Still unfunded way beyond.
And, and I got to say that the, if this board or no school board started this issue, legislators back, they drove, when the interest rates were really, really good in the early 2000s, they dropped that rate so far to basically nothing. And superintendents and business managers were like screaming, you should level it off at 7% or you're going to head for trouble. They didn't listen, they counted it as revenue to the school districts because they dropped that rate so much. They, they said, we gave you money over here, that's why your rate is up at 33%. It's nothing that school boards did.
Used to be 4%.
It's annoying to me that we have to talk about putting it away to cover something that they did. And that's why I'm not-
Well, and the reason they did it was, they gave tremendous pension increases to the people who were teaching or administrators here at the district, beyond what they could afford, but they've got a lot of votes for it. So they're, they're very vote oriented, so the idea of them taking away from folks, now, I think they would impose across the board 2% income tax.
But whatever fund the monies in, the interest will be earned in that fund. So if it's in capital, there'll be more interest, there'll be more money to pay for capital. If it's in general fund, you'll earn more interest.
We spend the interest-
That's what I was going to ask, it's like, we're talking about this interest, but there's interest in the CapEx fund as well. It's not like it's not earning anything if the money is in CapEx.
And you can always take it out of committed with a vote of six, I believe we determined that. So if things were to get to the point where we want to take it out of the committee, just take six of us to it. So I don't think that's a tremendous hurdle if it's that much of a catastrophe. But I don't like having any money in, in the unassigned, I'd like to see us bring that down to zero. And if the board's philosophy is put it all in CapEx, well, then, let's at least get started on the CapEx projects. But if we're not getting started on any, on any projects, put it all into PISers or whatever, and leave none of it unassigned, and wait and see what we want to do. Sorry.
Put it in PISers, that puts it in this committee.
OTEB and PISers are committed, and there's one more called uncompensated absences, but we're about, we're about 100% full on that. It's only a couple, a couple of weeks. So my understanding, we're, we're giving the administration direction to go to Don Flynn and get updated numbers on the top three projects?
We could get them on the projects that it sounds like the board is willing to at least entertain at some point in the future.
And what is the earliest we can get that? December?
We will move as quickly as we can on our end, so it'll, it'll just be based on Don's availability.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the AEDY while we're all talking about this, with the expansion? Does Dr. Bix, Dr. Bixby have designated space where she still kind of needs to move around depending on what space is available in the high school?
No, she's in the middle school.
Oh, she has, she has designated, so she doesn't have to spend any time trying to figure out where people are going to go on a week-to-week basis?
It's just the time period between like after school and when AED starts.
Okay, okay.
That, that, there's some crossover there that we have to move around a little bit, but once they're settled, they're settled.
Gotcha.
Most of the work takes place on computers, so it wouldn't be super practical to be moving.
Okay.
But it was the AEDY expansion that would require the expansion, physical expansion of the, of the middle school hour rack.
Right, but my-
Three or four rooms.
Yeah, yep. My understanding, back when we first started talking about designated space, and it was somewhat of a problem for her to find space, so I might have misunderstood that, and I wanted to see if it was still a problem.
No, no, you're right, yeah, and I think Brian handled that.
Which is wonderful, that's what I was asking.
Only the expansion of, of what AEDY will encompass that requires us, and I think it's a great idea to expand it.
I agree.
And I've talked about expanding AEDY for years now. So I, I'm hoping we expand it, but we will need space to do that also.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question? And you see, it just popped in my head, and this would be something for you to tell me.
Sure.
Is it totally impractical to combine the AEDY project and the DO project into one and build this bigger and have AEDY be here?
It was one of, in the last 18 months, I go back to, it was actually one of the footprint options that we explored. And we actually explored doing the locker room project also attached to the district office, for the same mentality of, of space usage. Ultimately, after speaking to Dr. Bixby, the way that the district office is used would not be supportive of what the needs of the AEDY program are, both from like soft costs and the materials needed to run AEDY. The space needed over here wouldn't be practical for the students to use as opposed to elsewhere. So it was entertained and explored.
Is that because it's easier to get the random supplies, staplers, and soft cost things from middle school than to walk across campus?
I, I would say like the, the setup stationary computer stations that the kids work on, and if, if we were talking about an expansion, you are talking about more kids, which would essentially be occupying a part of the district office essentially from 3:00 to 6:00 after school, or more importantly, when we talked about expanding AEDY, I was to expand it to a whole day program, which is what's most common across the state.
Yeah, that's what I was, you just mentioned computers, so is the, are we not going to kid out this new AEDY facility with new computers, we're going to move them, things that we already have in the middle school?
No, you would, I would recommend that we would incorporate new computers into the soft cost. I was saying in terms of being attached to this building, having AED run simultaneously to the workings of the business office and HR and the academic piece of the DO. When we looked at how to make those puzzle pieces fit, having them closer to the cafeterias, the larger spaces just seemed to fit that.
Now I'm understanding that part, okay.
Yeah, but no, I mean, it's a valid point, it's something we did look at. Like I said, the locker rooms for these facilities, we also looked at attaching on here, and both from space as well as practical aesthetics, it just didn't seem like it would be advantageous. But the other space that we looked at, where that would connect to the proximity to the gym, the PE building, did seem to make more spatial sense for the footprint of the district.
And Carl, the, the philosophy behind AEDY is changing immensely. And ultimately, the program is to be one of inclusion, in, inclusion into our public education, not exclusion of the students. So we want to integrate them, and in, in the districts where full-time programs are incorporated, students can enter themselves into the AEDY program if they see a need to have this specialized program, which may prevent them from ending up in an expulsion hearing or doing something, you know, they shouldn't. So there's, I, I really feel this board needs to be better educated about the future and purpose of where we're headed with AEDY in order to make some of these decisions.
I agree with you, because my impression of AEDY was a, a population that was segregated from the main population. That's, that's what I thought it was.
That's absolutely historically what it was. You're right. When it was like all dead, or one of those.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's very difficult to make decisions about facility and dollars and so forth when we don't even know exactly where we're heading with this program. So I think that's something we do want to put on our short-term list, is to have someone come in and give us a presentation about what other districts are doing and we're, what we're choosing to do in it for the future.
Yeah, and I think one of the things to just piggyback off of that, even before we talk presentations, we also have to respect and recognize that Dr. Bixby's primary role within the district is not AEDY. That is kind of her after-hours roles currently. And if we did go to a full-day program, it would still not be her primary role in the district. She has other initiatives that she's currently working on with the district, primarily an MTSS system, which is something that we're overdue for across the district, that she's working very hard, that has a, a heavy implementation lift to it. So, you know, we always call it initiative fatigue, when you just throw everything on people at the same time. And I think the idea would be that in her, and she and I have spoken, she feels the district's priority for all of our students right now should be on MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support, which has three levels to it. It hits everybody at level one, and then it gets more prescriptive as it goes. That's where her primary focus is right now in the district. So to do this type of wholesale change to AEDY simultaneously, while that's a two-year implementation, would probably be a lot.
And I feel that we need to observe, we need to go elsewhere and see successful programs and see unsuccessful programs. So I do agree that there may be a time element involved with this that you and I don't really want to see, or more additional time. But I think in order to do it the right way, we do need to observe.
And we want to do it the right way.
And Diana can speak to a few districts that she's already visited. Most notably, she has a contact in State College, which has a very successful program that she has visited already, and she speaks to the person who runs to their program regularly. She's been to the Allen Town Bethlehem area as well. So she can, she's been gathering that information. Again, the project, even the outline of what the footprint looked like wasn't done in a vacuum, it was done after she went and visited some of those other programs already. So it's more when that change is ready to happen, then I think that would be good information to bring to the board.
Would you think so? Financial plan here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions regarding budget, finance, or facilities? Do we have any special topics to discuss?
We do not, we don't.
Okay. And would you like to review the agenda for the November 21st meeting, please?
As I said, we will be at the Delaware Valley Elementary School for that meeting. We will be starting with three presentations, student council presentation, Eagle Scout presentations, which are always excellent, and then our student representatives, as we traditionally do. We have our normal items, and then four approvals. Pretty standard approvals in terms of our student issues, the approval of this list of policies, which will then get us back on track for our normal schedule, December, January-ish, we'll get back on. But this, this was a nice chunk of, of policies that did not have any changes. And we'll also have our fuel bid on for approvals for next week.
Just a, a, update or a little change in the fuel. In talking to one of the vendors, there's a possibility you can get a second-year fixed price, so we're bidding it for 25, 26, with fixed or fluctuating price. For a one-year, a two-year, or we can do one-year and not do a two-year, with the option of taking the one that's giving us the lowest delivery and profit place and having the option of expanding that for years three, four, and five. And the reason that is, three weeks ago, fuel was 25 cents less than it is now, but because we have the mandate that you have to bid it for three weeks, advertise, I'm sorry, advertise it for three weeks and then open a bid, I mean, I couldn't lock it in. And we also want to keep an eye on what may or may not happen with the election, so it's going to be a judgment call, but I thought it was a good time, and I talked to Marvin and Brian, and we thought it was a good time to at least test the waters, get out there. And the other thing, if we like the, they call it a differential, which is basically, you get a market price that they will buy the futures for that energy, except unleaded gas, they typically won't, but for diesel fuel and number two fuel oil, that you can fix it at any point in time. So if we award a bidder, we may not necessarily lock it in the day after we award the bidder, we might keep an eye on what the market might do. But what that does is, with our kind of energy consultants or whatever, we've already gotten the approval, so now if it really goes down at a certain point, we can lock it at a certain point, if you follow me. So, and it's all market sensitive, so when they give me that bid, they're giving me the best price at that time, but then we can take that differential and add it to whatever the market price is at a future date, if you follow me. So it's going to depend, and I'll take anybody's input if they have a crystal ball. We're going to open them on Wednesday, and hopefully come to you with who appears to be giving us the best price for when we want to lock in. And it might be, we best to lock in at least the first year, or if they give us a good two-year bid, but, you know, who knows what's going to go on with the energy market now. But I just thought we'd have the ability then to strike when we want to, but it doesn't mean we're going to lock the next day, but we can talk more next week, but bids are open next Wednesday, and we'll evaluate them Wednesday and Thursday and see if any of it makes sense. Go from there.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Before we move on to public comments, I would just like to say that, yes, last month, we ran into a bit of an impasse in our decision whether to transfer funds to the Capital X Fund. I would just like to congratulate this board for really delving into this topic, you did your research. I appreciate all of your comments tonight. Jack, you brought us a new idea, since you tend to do that each month. And I especially appreciate the work that you put in to explain to us why it is so important in your minds to transfer those funds. So this is what a work session is about. Carl, great comments, and I think we are heading in a really positive direction to do the best thing for this district. You know, back in 2012, we did pay off the debt to this district, so it is possible, as Bill knows, and that is something boards long, historically have always done for Delaware Valley. So I know that we will continue down that path. So thank you, and it'll be interesting to see where we end up.
Just to, to get back on that, when we paid off the debt, we didn't eliminate that line item in the budget.
Yeah.
Because it would have brought tax rates way down, $3 million taken around. So I, I think we reserved it somehow by putting it into capital reserve, how did we do that back then?
What, what we did is, we knew, that was when we were growing.
Yes.
And we knew we were going to have to build another school. So we kept the line item and, and kept, like if we were paying $3 million in debt per year, for one year or two, we basically used the $3 million as a down payment on your mortgage until the next building. So instead of going down and then having to go back up again. But hopefully, what you want is not to have a really, really major, major project moving forward in that you can kind of fund that 1.5 million, 2 million every year. It's such a whole for-
It was a great move back then, I'm not crazy.
Well, it's, yeah, it was very, it was well, well done, but.
And we just want to make sure that our facilities are well-maintained. We are blessed to have what we have, and that is because we have each step of the way made sure that we have put funds toward the various projects and keeping up with all of those various rolling types of needs that do come up. So that, that has to remain in our minds also. And now, we're going to move to public comments. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? So just give us your name, you have five minutes, give us your name, please.
Hi, good evening, my name's Carrie Williams, I live in Metamorris. I realize you have a different job than I do, your job is to run the whole school district, and my perspective is a little bit different, but I really do believe that we have in common the well-being of the students. I truly believe you have that in your minds and hearts, and, and I do too. I spent about 20 years in a classroom as a full-time music teacher in both public and private schools. And I used to say to my students, do you know what the most important thing is when you're here? Learn music! I said, actually, no, it's to make sure- I said, "Actually, no, it's to make sure that you're safe." I actually said that to them, because I knew that if anything were to ever happen, you know, I was the adult in the classroom. And so that's why I'm coming here tonight to talk to you. It's come to my attention that there are books in the schools now, and specifically the Dingman Delaware Middle School Library, which are normalizing the LGBTQ lifestyle among young people. Books such as Rick and Dean Jazz are in the Dingman Delaware Middle School Library. Recently, they were on a glass display. In the book Rick, he joins the Rainbow Spectrum Club and discovers that he's asexual. And his best friend was Jack, but now becomes Melissa, and she's a transgender girl. And in Jazz Jennings, becoming Jazz, he was like the poster child for the whole transgender movement. In 2007, Barbara Walters interviewed him when he was just like six years old. So those are just two of the books. I'm sure there's many more. And, you know, we've talked about book, library books for years now. And they even, they even have some, some quotes from the board. If you don't like a certain book, you shouldn't prevent other children from being able to read them. Maybe somebody among us did it. And then someone else said, "I'm not in favor of banning any books. I believe there are books that groups need and want, and I don't read them, but they need them." So it was kind of typified as banning books. And for the sake of argument, I really want to focus on the normalization and promotion of transgenderism. Because that, to me, is one of the most egregious false ideologies which are being promoted in our society today. Transgender ideology is actually cognitive and psychological abuse. The reality is sex is established at conception. Sex is either male or female. There is no spectrum. And if we look at it in terms of hard science versus soft science, hard science explores the natural world, biology, chemistry, physics. Soft science explores intangibles, behaviors, thoughts, emotions, such as psychology, sociology, or anthropology. The statement that there was no such thing as being born in the wrong body is a hard science fact. You know, when gender theory was proposed 70 years ago, there was no way to closely examine chromosomes. It was believed that the Y chromosome had only a few genes regulating male sex characteristics, such as anatomy, body hair, and lower-pitched voices. But now we know that's utterly wrong. Distinctures are found in each organ system, are determined in, in the earliest stages of development, and have lifelong impact. There is the presence of the Y chromosome in each cell of the male body, and there are two X chromosomes in every female cell. And the explosion of data demonstrating sex differences has promoted a major development of gender-specific medicines. So the hard science has proven that there is no difference between gender and sex. And reading these books where very likable characters are, you know, described, it really helps to promote this ideology. And we all know that if a young person begins to believe that they're, or, you know, older person too, but younger people, that it leads to hormone blockers and often gender reassignment surgery. And I, I really do believe the presence of these LGBTQ books is one of the most damaging things we can do for young people. Teenage brains are not fully developed until age 25. Adults think with the prefrontal cortex, the brain's rational part, but teens process information with the amygdala. That's the emotional part. In the last 10 years, the number of teens with gender dysphoria has gone up 4,000%. And this is not biology. It's a social contagion, contagion.
That's your five minutes, ma'am.
Okay, you're the school board directors. Please do the right thing and remove these books that are potentially destructive to our young people.
Any other comments?
I have a few comments. Matthew Contreras. So just a few observations. I apologize for not being at the school board meetings. I've been a little busy the last few months, but it's nice to see everybody. A few things. It'd be good if the school board would be proactive about the future of education. I'd like to see a discussion about that, perhaps a presentation. As you all know, we may be losing the Federal Department of Education, which I think is a good thing, have the states return to a different kind of education. And I think the school board would be wise in preparing for, for that and to discuss, to have those discussions ahead of time, if that's the case, because you're going to have to reimagine really the way we do things in this, in this Commonwealth and in all 50 states. So I'd like to see that. Now, having said that, you know, listening to the conversation today, having been here for, at the school board for going on five years, you know, I have a few observations. And the first one is the financial observation. So what I'd like to hear from the school board is, yes, you know, Mr. Blum's, Mr. Blum's job is to make it all puppies and rainbows. But as we all know, it's not all puppies and rainbows. And there are some hard decisions that this board is tasked with making. And yes, all of it is not your fault or your doing. And as I've said to many different boards, school boards and other in the Commonwealth, you know, a lot of this is a making of the, of the legislature and not the school board. And so that half of it is, is granted to the legislature. But the stuff that you do have control over, I think it's important to be honest with the public about. And certainly, the financial portion of it is. And I don't think that this board or the previous boards, since I've been here, have been terribly honest about what the financial situation is, especially when you're aware of it. Now, that's not to say that Jack has not done a good job, I think, about explaining things to the public, because in all honesty, this is very complicated. And certainly, Mr. Hesling has done a great job with his presentations and managing the budgets. But I think it's, it's really the height of arrogance, especially from this administration, to say that, to not be upfront about the financial situation. This board just gave a 23% increase to the administration. You're contemplating somewhere between a 30% and a 40% increase to the teachers. You are going to have to raise taxes. So let's be honest about it, and let's start talking about it. Because the fact of the matter is, you're going to have to raise taxes next year. And so I think absolutely some of that 1.5, 1.6 should go to the deferment of raising taxes, because you all know that you're going to have to do that. And an honest discussion needs to happen. $120 million unfunded liability is unacceptable. This is not monopoly money. This is the people's money. And it's, and it should be discussed, and you should be upfront with the public. And frankly, we're not being upfront. And to my final point, the communication in the school district. It starts with your superintendent, who clearly doesn't respect the public enough to look at them while they're talking to them. Not just myself, he constantly does this at public board meetings. I think it's utterly disrespectful. I have your attention. I have your, whether you support me or not is, is irrelevant. But I do have your attention, and I do appreciate it. The communication in the school district is not acceptable. Parents, and I am a parent in the school district, parents do not get the attention that they deserve. And so I'll give you a quick example. When that incident happened a few weeks ago with the student we all know about, who we won't talk about, obviously, I had to hear my own child say he was afraid. And I never got a call from the middle school about what had happened. Now, the call went out to high school, and there was, there was some level of communication. But this, this board needs to be on top of this district and this superintendent to be more communicative with people. It just simply doesn't happen. And frankly, you know, this is what the country has asked for. It's asked for our elected officials to begin making changes, because we're not happy with what's going on. And it really begins with communication. This happened when Mr. Bell was here, and this is happening when Mr. Blum has been here. And I think it's only fair that the public be allowed to have a good communicative language with the school district. And they're not doing the job. They're not doing the job. You know, and we need you guys to be the voice of reason. And I, I just don't see that. Yes, you have a lot of tough decisions. But the fact of the matter is, we can do a better job with communicating with the public. Even, even hearing the stuff with, you know, the glucose monitor thing that you all know about and most of the public knows about. It shouldn't have to get to that level where, you know, a parent feels the need to... That's your five minutes, Mr. Contreras. Give me two seconds. A parent shouldn't feel the need to come to a board meeting... So that's your five minutes. ...to resolve an issue that can be easily resolved inside the school district. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move to the board. Are there any board comments? Oh, hold on.
I don't have a comment. Yeah.
Sorry.
My quick comment is going to go to Carrie's point. Is there a display displaying LGBTQ books in the libraries in the school?
In the Dingman Middle School Library?
Okay, well, Dingman Middle School or any of the school libraries.
I have not heard a parent complain about that, but I'd be happy to look into it for you. It was a good question.
Okay. Okay, because if there is, you know, my opinion on that would be that there should it be, in my opinion. But if there's an argument that there isn't a reason for it, then we need to have displays of Christian faith books and different types like that to, to be equitable to everybody's beliefs, not just to one certain belief system. And they would need to be as prominently displayed as these are displayed. And that's something I would want to see. But I'd like to know if it's actually something going on today in our schools.
So I, I'd like to make just a couple of comments. Carrie, thanks for your comments. Normalizing the LGBTQ lifestyle, I think, has happened in our society over the last 25 years. And therefore, yes, it has come to the schools also. I'm not sure there's a way to reverse that trend at all. But there are things that we can do, like Carl was saying, to make it equitable for other minorities, if you want to call it that, such as Christian groups or gender groups or what have you. Calling it psychological abuse and cognitive abuse, boy, it really treads a fine line there as to what, what that is. And different people will have different perspectives on it. As to the no difference between gender and sex, I kind of agree with you. I think you're born the way your, your sex is determined at birth. And I don't, I don't kind of agree that it's a social contagion. I think that's really harsh language. Getting to what Matt has said. Matt, thank you for your comments. Welcome back. Glad to have you here. The end of the Department of Education, I think, will be determined by the new Department of Government Efficiency. And I think that'll, that'll happen probably in the next six months. If it doesn't happen, then all, all of that will pitter away. We are a branch of the legislature. We do the work of the legislature. We're not a branch of the executive, which is why they couldn't impose masks on us, but he did anyway. So, yeah, we do the work of the legislature. And right now, the legislature is split. It's been split for a while. And I, I kind of think it leans to the left. And I'm not a person who leans to the left. I'd probably lean to the right. The unfunded liabilities, I can get soapbox this high, or this high, or that high. And it doesn't change the fact that we are in a, if you look at our balance sheet, we are technically broke. But the whole Commonwealth is technically broke. The United States of America is technically broke. But we all believe in this paper, and that's what keeps us going. Hopefully, we can restore the, the paper to its prior glory and get rid of a $36 trillion known deficit. That's the known deficit. That's not the unfunded deficit, which is probably five times that amount. But it's the role of CPAs and through the GASB to present it. You know, we're not here to say, "Here's how you solve it." But the reason it's in our audit reports is because the Government Accounting Standards Board, controlled by the CPA profession, wants people to have no excuse that they didn't know about it. Now, we've known about this unfunded liability. This is the 10th year. Because if you look at our audit reports, it's 10 full years. We know it's there, and we, we acted on it in the past. We've saved the $7 million or $19 million altogether. It's been since the, since COVID that we stopped, and since the board changed. But there were prior boards that always put money into the, into the unfunded liability, and then it stopped with COVID. And parental communication. If we're not having parental communication, if the administrator, administration, and we ask them all the time, and they tell us who they're speaking to. We're not allowed to reveal it in public session, who, who the parents are, who the students are. But we kind of grill them in executive session. Did you do this? Did you do that? Why is this student doing that? But we can't bring it here. It would be a violation of that student's privacy rights. Some of the parents have brought their children's names here. I don't advise it at all. But no one is not being communicated with, from what I can tell after I, I speak to these fine folks. So, yeah, parental communication, always a must, never ends, always has to happen. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I think, I think we're going to continue to preserve student privacy rights at the same time that we assure you that, from what I can tell, these folks talk to parents all the time.
The middle school, just a class...
This is board comment.
This is board comment. Was not notified.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from board members?
I have a comment.
Yeah, Kristi.
Pam and I were fortunate enough to sit on the PSBA legislative platform meeting on November 2nd. And it was my first time. Pam's a veteran at it, but it was my first time. And it was very interesting, because what, it was a, all of the, or however many wanted to, participating school board members, I think there were 30-something live in Mechanicsburg. And there were 236 of us on Zoom. And we were voting on the legislative priority issues for the 25, 26 legislative session. And it was just very interesting to hear a lot of the comments, because there were, there were some proposals that I thought were no-brainers around charter school reform, around public schools, financial responsibility to charter schools, around charter schools' responsibility for not saying they're free so that everybody thinks that, you know, this is all fun and games and there's no cost to it. There were a lot of people that were against some of those measures. And it was very, very surprising to hear school board members say, I mean, the last comment was, "We're beating a dead horse. We need to move on. I don't want to talk about this anymore." We're like, it's $2 million a year that we're paying everybody. So it was very interesting to sit on that. A lot of talk about mental health. And again, a lot of discussion on whether or not that belongs in the schools. A lot of very strong comments about how if we are going to educate the whole child, then mental health is part of the whole child, and the teachers can't help but be at least partially responsible for that mental health. And a lot of very strong feelings of, "The state has dropped the ball, and it's pushing it to the teachers, and the teachers don't deserve it. They have got enough going on with the education and the reading, writing, and arithmetic." So it was a very, very, very interesting discussion. They talked about school safety improvements, that the state must contribute and continue to invest in school safety. I think that was about it. Expanding the free breakfast program to include universal free lunch. Now, these aren't things that are definite. It was just the school board directors voting on these, what topics were going to be brought to the legislature. So these are the things that PSBA is going to be working for us for this year. And then the last one was about not use, the state should not use artificial intelligence or any algorithms to assess or screen individual written response on a statewide standardized test. So it was really, I thought it was a great call. Lots of discussion.
It was off to a slow start.
It was off to a slow start.
There was a lot of discussion pertaining to bylaws and policy and so forth.
And how things are stated and...
And it was a definite reflection of the current times. I've been attending for quite a few years, and I have to say, I've never really seen or heard a meeting like this one regarding PSBA. Just a lot of conflicts. And, well, I guess that's it.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to take all the points, but I had my notes.
Yeah, I know. You covered them.
I had my notes here, so I figured I'd go for it. Oh, and then, if it's all right, I plugged DVMS, so I need to plug DVMS. Aladdin Jr., oh gosh, I don't have the dates. It's the weekend before Thanksgiving. So that's the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at DVMS. Go out with the kids. It's going to be Aladdin Jr.
Pam, I would just like to say as well, we now have as much standardized testing data from the previous year that we're going to have for... data from the previous year that we're going to have. For those that aren't aware, the public facing Future Ready PA Index site went live on Tuesday. So we are going to do our data academic presentation update at the December voting meeting as a presentation. And I think that there is a lot of good news and things to celebrate and congratulate our people on, over the previous year.
Let's look forward to that.
I do have one thing to what Matt Contreras was saying. Homeschool connection and family engagement is something that's very important to me as well. And being a parent in the district, volunteering, getting to know my staff that was working with my children was very important and something I was able to do. And I know not every parent can get into the classroom all the time to do that. But I'm always looking for ways to try to increase family involvement. There's workshops in the districts and parents are attending and training and something that I'd like to work on too, to expand family connection into the schools.
Thank you.
Just a quick thing to piggyback on Christine. I did go up to Ding Dell Middle School for their senior night. It helps to get old, you know? It was absolutely lovely. The dinner was delicious. They must have had at least 40 raffle baskets going on that, you know, and when you walk, you didn't have to buy the ticket even. They gave you the ticket as you walked in. And they were all wonderful and the play was fantastic. And it was a lovely free night. It was great. I commend those kids. They did a super, super job.
Phenomenal job.
They really did a fantastic job.
And it was the adult version of the show because-
Yeah.
The Wizard of Oz Jr. was only 45 minutes. So the directors down at DVMS decided to go with the full version. So it was, it was a long, full production and they did a wonderful job.
The kids did a super job.
And there were over 180 seniors that came, two seniors that did the night. So kudos to the-
It was a really great opportunity.
Kudos to the folks over there. They are increasing-
I think they even buzzed some people in from Belle Reve and stuff like that, going to the show. So it was, it was very, very, very impressive. It was a nice job from the Ding Dell Middle School.
I would just like to thank admin and teachers and the PTA especially. I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Breakfast at DDES. And they, a lot of hard work, you could tell went into that. They put on a beautiful practice. And it was just, I've been doing it for several years. Now I do it every year with my kids. And if you're a veteran, I recommend going. It's great. And, you know, they did a fantastic job.
That's a shock.
Yeah, and I know other schools-
They do such a nice job.
It was fantastic.
Anybody else? No other comments? The meeting is adjourned.